Welcome to the Maryville Town Council Meeting for today, Tuesday, August 23rd at 6:30. Please stand for the invocation, followed by a moment of silence.
Let us bow our heads, please. Father, we thank you for the grace again to gather and to discuss the business of the town of Maryville. We pray that you would give us wisdom, give us understanding that we might be able to project. We thank you, Father, for the unity of your Spirit where we can collaborate and do the business of the town. We pray for our police officers and those who are citizens of this town. We ask that you'd give us the grace to agree, to disagree, that there would be no unnecessary hostility and that you would be glorified. Bless our chairman, bless every councilperson, bless every person who's here, that we, oh, God, may carry out business your way. And we thank you for this grace upon us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Ward, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Trezor, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilman Spann, Councilman Hardaway, Councilman Minchuck, Councilwoman Uzalak.
Present.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. Moving on to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Tonight, we are very honored to be swearing in a new Maryville Police Officer, Amanda Lynn Early. Chief Cortino, I'll turn it over to you, please, and to Clerk Trezor to do the swearing in.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just want to give you a briefing on our new officer, Officer Amanda Early. She did seven years with the Hammond Police Department. She did a couple of years with I U N. She also was with the National Guard as a second lieutenant. She also served as a volunteer firefighter as well. And she also has some other training certificates, whether it's E M T and hazmat. And with that being said, I'd like to introduce you to P. number 425, Amanda Early.
Amanda, can you please raise your right hand? Please repeat after me. I Amanda Lynn Early.
I Amanda Lynn Early.
Let me get closer to you. solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And of the state of the in- uh, and of the state of Indiana.
And of the state of Indiana.
And thus, I will faithfully, impartially, and honestly discharge my duties.
And thus, I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge my duties.
As a police officer of the Maryville Police Department.
As a police officer with the Maryville Police Department.
And the town of Maryville, Indiana.
And the town of Maryville, Indiana.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my skill and ability.
And to the best of my skill and ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Kelly, would you give them the microphone? Bill, would you wait, please? Bill? Thank you all. Moving on tonight, we do have an Aquinas letter request for a fee reduction. Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. This letter is dated Wednesday, August 17th, 2022. To whom it may concern, Aquinas Catholic Community Schools is excited to be able to serve even more Maryville residents by expanding the physical space of the school with two new classrooms. We are also connecting our two buildings with a new secure entrance. This will dramatically increase safety and security for our entire school community. As we invest in a more secure building allowing us to accommodate more scholars, we are truly grateful for the support of the town of Maryville. As a not-for-profit organization, it is imperative we monitor costs and ensure funding is spent responsibly in service to our students. We humbly request a 50% reduction in permitting fees for our expansion project. We truly appreciate your consideration. Sincerely, Lisa Gutierrez, Principal. Make a motion to approve the request, Mr. President.
Second. Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Hardaway, for approval of the request out of 50% reduction.
I would make a comment, Mr. President, that Aquinas School recently received $1.6 million from the Big Shoulders Program, which is basically, Joe, funded through the Dean and Barbara White Family Foundation, is it not?
Uh, Dean and Barbara White's one of the funders of the program.
One of the funders of the-
Rich, Big Shoulders, Dean and Barbara White, and Bruce and Barbara White.
Yes. Obviously, this has full endorsement from the Gary Diocese. Rich and I have had the benefit of having kids go through Aquinas. It's an absolutely fantastic facility, and they're making another investment in the town, increasing their student population. It is a feeder school to Maryville and to Andrayan, both, so.
Any other discussion on the motion? Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the Accounts Payable voucher for approval for August 23rd. We have the approval of the amended Town Council meeting minutes of July 26th, and the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of August 9th.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uzalak, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of the consent agenda as submitted. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committee reports, Budget and Finance, Councilman Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Don't forget this time.
Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I want to just briefly go over some of the information I have from the CDC, because they have now a standard in the terms of, we got low, I think, well, you weren't here last time, but they have low, medium, and high as a community standard. So we're at the medium right now. Positivity rate is still at 19%. It was at 19% at the last council meeting. Specifically, the Maryville cases since March, 461 Maryville residents have been, have had COVID tests that tested positive. And additionally, there's quite a few people out here probably in the terms that use home healthcare tests, home COVID tests. We're not even getting those reports, so that number may be higher. We had 62 hospital administrators, I mentioned, in the past little week. I think we had four deaths. I think that's what I read.
Four.
Yeah. So would you like to add anything to that, Mark? And I'm glad you're doing well.
Thank you. Well, it is still out there. We get an average of one or two in Lake County every week with COVID. So if you don't have your shots or your booster, please get out there and get it. They will be coming out with the second booster very soon. I don't know the exact date, so we will-
Additionally, Mr. President, I want to tell the African-American community, because this comes from Dr. Foxy. He definitely said that African-Americans, not that nobody else would have this COVID thing, but they're at a higher risk due to a lot of other variables. And he, based on the news that I got and on the newspapers as well, he is definitely saying, get boosted, because it's getting ready to be for real. We don't know what the fall is going to bring, even though if I start seeing that thing ramp up, I think I have a few ideas on how to help the community to be a little safer with it. So yes, that came from Dr. Foxy. It didn't happen, didn't come from me. With that said, Mr. President, that ends my report.
Thank you. Doesn't seem like COVID wants to go away, does it?
Lot of variants out there. They bury one, another one shows up.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
No report.
Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, just briefly, Mr. President, today was the groundbreaking for the Silos Sanders Farm, the 195-acre industrial park on each side of Mississippi. Sanders family was there. Rich and Leonard and I were down there with Pat. Congressman Van was there. They are already expecting walls next week for the very, for the first building. Crowe Holdings, as I said in my comments, does not mess around. And so we're very excited. That'll be the second-largest industrial park we've got in the town, and they're doing an outstanding job, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uzalak.
Yes, I've had a few complaints on 74th and Hendrix is our Hendrix Park. Torrance is not here tonight, so I don't know if I should really go into detail on it, but there's a field behind the park, and that field has been mowed by the town for umpteen years. Now, right now, they are not mowing. They say it belongs to a private owner, but we can't find out who. So I don't know anymore about it, except I've had about eight calls on it so far. The people do want the town to continue to mow it, so I don't know where we are right at this time with it.
Sheila, can you look up the key number on that between you and Matt, and we can find out who the owners are and reach out to them?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mrs. Uzalak. Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
No report.
Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Councilman Pettit.
Uh, Mr. President, we have a committee meeting scheduled for Thursday at 5:00 at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center.
Special Projects, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mr. White.
Uh, no reports, Mr. President.
NERC Seed, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
You guys on vacation last week, or what?
Yep.
Stormwater Management Resources, I don't see Mr. Lake tonight. Pat, is there anything from that, from him?
No report, sir.
South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
No report.
Our Territory Board, Mr. Spann. Department Reports, Sheila Shine.
I'll just wait until I get down to the BZA, I mean, the-
Okay. Chief Cortino.
Uh, yes, I'll make it brief. Like I stated last meeting, the month, the summer months, we have been extremely busy out in the streets. Just getting the numbers for the month of July, we did over 4,000-plus calls of service. We also had time to do some traffic as well in between those calls, which was 476 traffic stops. I don't have the amount of enforcement that was put forth, but our officers are out there, and we're looking forward to the month of August. It's coming to a halt, and it looks like we're pretty busy as well. That's all I-
Now, Chief, by hiring an experienced officer like Amanda tonight, she goes through a very small period of orientation, right? And she'll be out there patrolling?
Yes, she'll start tomorrow morning. She'll start her FTO, Field Training, and basically is geography, sometime is geography, but by her being familiar with the area, that should come to her. So she'll be starting tomorrow, and hopefully she'll be successful with it in a month or so.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Did you have something, Mr. White?
Uh, yes, I'm actually waiting to say this to Mr. Reardon.
Okay.
Okay. I did actually talk to him earlier. I just want to say that in the terms of these businesses here, there's paper everywhere. They need to do their job and keep those properties clean. There's bottles and cans up and down 61st Avenue. And most of that's on people's business property. They have to take care of that, because it makes all of us look bad, especially when you come into off 61st Avenue. So I had talked to Pat about it, and I told him to get on Indiana Department of Transportation and tell him to cut the weeds in the middle of the street. They do have street sweepers, I think, and they need to use them, because when I get another community complaining about our community, I have a real problem with that. So yeah, this was definitely, I just want to let you know I had that conversation with Pat. He's on board with it, but I want to make sure that businesses know. I'm coming out there, because it just looks bad.
Sure does.
Thank you. Nothing else to add.
Anything else to add, Mr. Reardon, on that topic or any other?
No, sir. We're engaged, and that is the entire professional staff.
Mr. President, if I may. I just want to note that Councilman Spann did enter the meeting. Now we have seven members.
John, how are you?
For the record.
Very good. Moving on tonight to general orders. We have no first reading ordinances. We have no second reading ordinances. We do have Resolution 22-56. It's a resolution authorizing the donation of a certain piece of real estate to another governmental entity in all matters related thereto. Mr. Svetnov, do you want to brief us on this one? I know you were involved in getting this together.
Yes, the Lake County Parks and Recreation Department had approached us. There is a town-owned parkland next door to the Turkey Creek Golf Course. It's about eight acres. It's never been developed as a park. It's been sitting on, in our inventory for a while. We've done nothing with it. So Lake County Parks and Recreation Department wants to take it into their inventory and do something with it in relation to the Turkey Creek Golf Course. So at this time, I'm recommending to the Town Council that we go ahead and we donate this to the Lake County Parks and Recreation Department. I think it's a worthwhile endeavor, and what will happen is if the resolution's passed tonight, they will pass the same or similar resolution, and we will then deed the property over to them.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Hardaway, to approve Resolution 22-56. I will add for the record, it's the property address known as 910 West 66th Rear Avenue in Maryville. Any other discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes this issue.
For our attorney. Did the Lake County Parks Department say they're interested in this property?
Oh, no, they approached us a while ago.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Okay.
They definitely want the parcel.
Okay, I did not know that. Thank you.
Sure.
Very good.
Mr. White?
Yes, additionally, for the attorney here, we're giving this property, how many acres again are we doing that?
Eight acres.
Eight acres?
Approximately, plus or minus eight.
You know, I just want to let you know that I'm definitely a person that wants to see affordable housing built, and I don't know if that would be appropriate for that, but that's what my thoughts are. I just don't want to give the county any more property, so that's my part of the discussion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Moving on tonight to Resolution 22-57. It is a simple transfer of funds within the town budget and the general fund. The decrease is $1,034.61. The increase is the same. The net effect is zero.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Uzalak, for approval of Resolution 22-57. It is a transfer of funds.
Motion approved.
We already have that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kind of stacking me up here, aren't you, Kelly? Thank you. Moving on tonight to the American Rescue Plan. It's an AP voucher register summary for the August 23rd, 2022 spending.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hardaway.
The Rescue Plan for this pay period is $208,826.50. That's my motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway.
Second.
Second by Mr. Minchuck. Open for discussion.
Uh, yes, Mr., actually, I was going to do a parliamentary inquiry, because as I go with this American Rescue Plan payable voucher, I'm noticing that we are donating money to clubs and planting trees on town property. Being part of the Community Center Committee, somebody calls me and tell me, can, is this what we're going to do now? So can other businesses or other nonprofits, can we also give them American Rescue Plan dollars? And people are getting mad at us, because this lady says, and she's the one that flagged me, she says that I got turned down for the American Rescue Plan for some work inside my house. So how does, in a sense, that when we have individuals that want to just have donations for American Rescue Plan, I don't see that being, I mean, I say, I don't see that being part of the rescue plan. So now I'm going back and tell that constituent, they're going to approve that $1,500, but how do I tell her why we wouldn't approve for her work that was done on the inside of her home? So we got, seriously, now, we got to be-
I don't know which one you're talking about, so.
Okay, let me go back.
Why was she told she was not approved?
Because she was told that the American Rescue Plan did not approve of inside homes' work. And she tells me that if these companies are getting, or these clubs, or these other nonprofits are getting American Rescue Plan, and she need her home, who she said has mold and other things in it, and she need that done, I just don't think that's a fair comparison to somebody to, especially when you're planting trees on town property. I didn't know about that. Again, I'm sitting on a committee for the Dean and Barbara White Center, and this, I just found this out recently. So I'm going to tell her that they think, that this council may think that it's more important to donate charity, to charity than to have her help fix her house up on the inside. That's it.
Well, it's not really the council, it's the committee.
Well, the committee consists of the council.
Not really. It's other people involved also.
Really? You sit on the council, you sit on the committee, right?
Yeah. Matt Lake.
So that's still kind of like the council, because that's going to move that for approval? So.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know my dissent with that.
Sure, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk Trezor, roll call, please.
Councilman Spann. Councilman Hardaway.
Yep.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uzalak.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
No.
And Councilman Bella.
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on tonight to BZA and Large Gathering Actions, Ms. Shine.
Mr. President, we have two large gathering permit applications. The first one is from Amy McDonough, owner of Food Bank of Northwest Indiana, requests approval for a large gathering permit right the region. The purpose of this large gathering is an organizational fundraiser located at 6490 Broadway. The event will be held Saturday, September 3rd, 2022, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. This event is a fundraiser that raises funds to support the hunger relief efforts. A maximum of approximately 250 people will be in attendance, which will be controlled through ticket sales. Attendees will wear wristbands that are identifiable to onsite security. There will be 300 parking spots onsite at the parking facility. Therefore, no parking will be used from surrounding property owners. Portable water facilities will be available in the facility, and there will be six male and six female indoor toilet facilities available. The food bank staff is responsible for their maintenance. There will be one dumpster and five trash cans available for use. They will be maintained by Total Disposal Incorporated. There will be no camping overnight stays. Entertainment provided by DJ Brian Catalyst Production. Alcohol will be served at this event, and the owner has provided a copy of the liquor license. The site has been inspected by the fire inspector, and security will be provided by an off-duty Maryville police officer.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mr. Minchuck, for approval, a large gathering permit for the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Sheila.
The second large gathering permit application comes from Adam Expadoza, owner of Pepe's Off-Broadway, approval for a large gathering permit for Mexican Independence Day located at 260 East 84th Drive. The event will be held Saturday, September 10th, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. and Sun- and on, and Sunday. The event will be held to raise awareness at the Mexican Independence Day. Approximately 165 people will attend. The event will be confined by space and 150 seats available. There will be 100 parking spaces available and accessible from paved public streets. The petitioner has cross permission from Mavis Tires for guest parking. Drinking water will be available for all attendees. There will be two male toilet facilities and two female toilet facilities, which will be maintained by Gary sanitation. There will also be one dumpster and 10 trash containers onsite. Those will be maintained by Public Service Incorporated. There will be no camping or overnight stays. Entertainment will be provided by a band, Heavy and Lost Treasure Amigos Trio. Alcohol will be served at this event. The permit, the petitioner has supplied the amusement and entertainment permit, as well as the liquor license and catering license. Security will be provided by the Maryville Police Department. And, Mr. President, that event is only September 10th, 2022, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Thank you, Sheila.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uzalak, for approval of the large gathering permit for Pepe's Off-Broadway in celebration of Mexican Independence Day. Is Adam here or someone from Pepe's? No? They've done this in the past, right? This is not something new. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to old business. Is there any old business before us?
Mr. President.
Mr. White?
Yes, at the last council meeting, I guess it would fall under old business. There was a statement on civility. It was read, and I want, and I think the civility reading came from the 2019, and I wasn't a councilperson at that time, so I just wanted to let the record show that I don't completely agree with that letter of civility. That's the best I can do. I didn't like it, because first of all, and I like to go on, we got First Amendment rights. This is what people talk about all the time. I'm not admonishing the council, I'm just saying from my own, you know, from my own standpoint, I know how it feels when people tell you, go somewhere. And I just wanted to let the people know, I wasn't part of that. Thank you.
Leonard, I wasn't here. What are you talking about? What kind of letter?
Well.
It was an ordinance.
It was an ordinance.
Civility ordinance.
Civility ordinance. I think you were on the council at the time that they approved it, and it was talking about how you should do this, that, and the other in terms of decorum and other things. I just think that when you tell people, you can't do this, right before we, before they even able to say nothing, so it just shuts them off right away.
Well, what were they told that they can't do? I'm in Lindo. What are you talking about?
Mr. Counsel, I mean, Mr. Counselor, can you tell her, since I think you might have wrote that?
Civility ordinance was adopted in 2019. What it establishes is certain decorum rights and certain procedural rights for meetings. No slanderous comments, no libelous comments, no repetitive comments. No slanderous comments, no libelous comments, no repetitive comments, and there's also a statement that was made about adhering to an agenda, the agenda items themselves, which the presiding officer has a right to do, if they choose to do so. So to, to keep the meeting moving, instead of having repetitive or slanderous and libelous comments...
Sure.
Or have comments which may not relate to the agenda tonight, that's why the statement was written.
Okay, I can come again, thank you.
And, and, Mr. President, additionally to what the attorney is saying, is that people have a First Amendment right to address their government. You just can't cut me off before I even get a chance to tell you what I'm talking about. Thank you, that's it.
Any other old business before us? Hearing none, new business, any new business? Public comment, please state your name and address for the record. We allow three minutes for your comments. And please make sure you signed in on the sign-up sheet, please.
Good evening, my name is Shonda Flowers, address 6137 Connecticut Street, Maryville, Indiana. To piggyback off of Councilman White, in terms of what the standards are, just so I'll know myself, with regards to the civility ordinance that was ran, interesting enough, I've worked here for over 11 years, and that was the first time that that ordinance, and I know that it was adopted in 2019, that it was ever read. And so it's interesting, because I would love to know what are the standards as to when the council decides to speak regarding the ordinance and hold the residents and the citizens accountable to it, and what, when they will make the decision not to. Because I was confused by it. I know that we had a lot of people here who wanted to speak with regards to issues pertaining to the court, as well as the clerk, and so it was to our surprise that that ordinance was read upfront. So are there any particular standards that you can get or show as to when the decision is made with regards to that? Because there have been other hot topics besides the court and the clerk, and never has that ever been read. Even when we had issues where Councilman Spann, the police was not happy with remarks that was made to him. Interesting enough, every door was open, exits, didn't matter whether or not they should have been blocked or should not, but the fraternal order police showed up and a variety of people. The halls were completely full, the doorways, their weapons was brought into the court, everything was laid out red carpet for them to be able to speak their mind, and they had every right to do so, to speak how they were disheartened. So I'm just trying to understand what standard is set when there are certain topics talked, spoken about, or topics are not spoken. That's just one of issues, because I know I only got a couple more minutes. Another one with regards to transparency, when we speak about transparency, there are people here today that want to speak with regards to the court and/or the clerk. They were told at the last council meeting that August 23 would be the opportunity for us to have the second reading, or you all to have the second reading with regards to shuttering our doors, yet that's not on the agenda, so again, they came in for nothing. They weren't having the opportunity to have those conversations. So is there something that's going to be possibly uploaded onto the town's webpage with regards to what the agenda items are, so we can minimize what happened the last time, the agenda being changed, what, 10 minutes before people came?
The agenda is posted on the website, yes.
Okay, will there be one...
Friday, Friday prior to the Tuesday meeting.
What about the one that was, that was changed, that the public didn't know?
That was posted, yes, ma'am.
10 minutes prior to is when that agenda was changed, because a lot of people came to speak regarding those items that were on there, and then the civility ordinance was read to them, and they couldn't discuss any of those matters.
If there's a last-minute change, it's not going to be posted into the court.
Oh, I understand that, I'm just trying to see, at least on an average, so they'll know, instead of today, which was announced by the council, August 23 would be that topic, and we're not having that conversation, do you have another date that we can possibly have that?
We're going to hear them tonight, okay? That's what we're going to do.
Okay.
That's okay with you?
Yes, that's more than fine for me, thank you.
You bet. Who's next?
Darian Collins, I live in Innsbruck. My comment is a couple of things. I'm glad to see that the alley or driveway or whatever behind the strip mall that's right by the Hilton was paved, that thing was full of holes, it was terrible. I drove by there yesterday, and I was so glad that was paved, so I was glad to see that that's being maintained. But I also wanted to speak on the agenda and the two items that were removed at the last minute from the last agenda. The town and people are coming to speak on those issues, and we have opinions, and we want to be heard. And I just think it's very odd that you had a whole agenda of no report, no report, no report, no report, no report, and no report. And so you have two items that were removed from the last agenda, they are not on this agenda, and there's no report for the base, for the majority of this agenda. What is the status of those two items, the court and the clerk's office, and we in the town want to know when those items are going to appear, when it's going to be the discussion, and when that's going to move forward? To me, it looks like political gamesmanship, and I do not like it, and many of us don't. Thank you.
On a different note, my name is Maddie Collins, 7536 Taney Place. Good evening to everybody. We have, my neighbors and I, we have gotten together, 75th and Taney Place is a drag race strip. We've asked you all to, before, can you please do something about it? I had a car come all the way up in my yard, almost took out my guest room. My mailbox has been knocked down three times, because people are coming through there, drag racing, speeding, and we're asking you all to please help us to do something about this. And when we talked to one council member, you know what they told us? Speed bump slows down the traffic. That's what it's supposed to do. We have kids living in our neighborhood, the pastor that lives across the street almost got hit by a car yesterday. So who do I talk to about this? Because, I mean, I don't know who else to go to. So who do you want us to go to about this? Because somebody's going to get hurt. I made a police report when they ran up into my house.
What's the address again?
7536 Taney Place, that's where I live. It is down Taney Place. One guy was speeding, he was driving so fast, when he went to turn the curve, he almost ran into the house on the corner. You guys have to do something.
I am the councilman in that...
I know that.
And I've had several calls, I talked to Police Chief, Assistant Chief Costa, and he was supposed to have someone out there, which I believe he did.
I do not see an officer on our street at all.
Okay, because not only Taney Place, they use Hendrick Street too, and we have a lot of cars speeding, and as far as I know, he had somebody out there. When, I can't tell you.
No, that didn't happen. But I'm putting you all on notice that somebody needs to do something.
Our police chief Luther, maybe he could answer you.
Like I, like I pointed out earlier, our calls of service is over 4,000 close calls, and our traffic, we did over 476, and I know we can't be everywhere, and I get the calls all the time, because people do spit around, and we do get out there and we enforce the traffic laws. And we're going to continue to do it, trying to work with what we got.
Chief, I don't mean to be disrespectful. I never see any officers coming down through there, I really don't. And that is, is just so bad, and I'm so afraid. Like I said, this car came down, ran into, almost ran into my house, tore up my yard. I made a police report. I'm just asking you all to help us with this. Thank you.
We ordered them.
Good evening, my name is Candace Lilly. I'm not a Ross Township resident, however, I am a 19-year employee with Maryville Community School Corporation, and right now I serve as the Director of Student Services, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for the Maryville Community School Corporation. And I'm just here to speak for a moment on truancy court, and I don't know if these comments are premature, because I know you have, you're going to be discussing it, but I just want to put on record that we are concerned at Maryville Community School Corporation that the truancy court may be going away, because it has been a valuable resource for us, for our students in our district who are chronically absent from school, who do not respond to typical progressive discipline, who, you know, we've done everything we can do, but then we found that truancy court has been highly effective in getting families to address the truancy concerns. And so for the students that, you know, before my current role, I was assistant principal at the high school for six years, and for students that I have personally referred to court, who parents didn't respond to meetings, who the tensions and the, it just wasn't working, once they have come before the truancy court, we saw an immediate turnaround. And so for students who then begin to attend school, then the grades are better, then they may graduate, which helps the town of Maryville, because now you don't have dropouts on the streets with not many options. So I just hope that as you, you know, look at the reasons for getting rid of town court, I know there's the town court, and then there's truancy court, if you can really make the best faith effort that you can to retain truancy court, because we really, you know, appreciate and, you know, utilize that resource, and I know our superintendent feels the same way. I know he's had individual conversations with some of you on the council, so just keep that in mind, that the Community School Corporation would not like to see that go away. Thank you.
My name is Pastor Edward Sims. I reside in Ross Township. Again, with the court system kind of saddened that it's even being considered, as long as it took us to get it from the history. And then I read in some papers where it was supposed to be so much money in debt, but here you giving eight acres of land to the county. I just zilloed what eight acres of land would cost in Maryville, and I didn't find, the closest one I found was at 60-something. One acre, less than one acre, is $50,000, and you going to give eight acres away to the county that has all kinds? I know, I know there's exchange, but come on. If we short of money, if my bill's short, I don't care who give it to me. That's just the truth of the matter. If I can't pay a bill, whatever I got to sell that's of value is what I'm going to use to sustain myself. How are we thinking? How are we thinking? Did anybody go and see what this land is worth? It's next to a golf course. Next to a golf course. And the town, why come the town don't want it? If they got an idea, let's, let's adopt their idea, let's find out, can we partner, before we just hand something that valuable away? All y'all got a car out there, probably, probably expensive one. I trade, I trade my little beater that I'm riding, it ain't got but 50,000 miles on it. I trade one of them for one of them big ones that's sitting outside. To ride better, I don't want the note, but I'd ride it. And that's what you all are saying to the county. Take our land, we don't need the money. But then when I get my bills, my tax bills, my, all the bills that come through this town, it's got cable, water, every, every bill that comes through, that I get in my house, has some kind of surcharge for Maryville. Come on. It may be five or 10 cent, but when folks, we got senior citizens that are on Social Security. And when you start taking that away and adding to their bills, we always talk about, we don't want to be like you. You going to make it like that if you don't change? Let's think there's a proper way to do this. Somebody should have had this property appraised. Y'all just pass the thing to say, give it away. How do you retract something you just gave away that's valuable?
So we may have not been very clear on the land, but Joe, this land, as far as I understand, it's landlocked, it's in between the county land and the golf course area.
It's unacceptable.
It's not really buildable, there's no access to the land. It just happens to be land that the town of Maryville owns, because no one else owned it, basically. So there's really no, there's no value to the land, because you can't build on it.
Because of Butts Turkey Creek, sir, it's county-owned, county-owned golf course.
We probably should have done a better job of explaining that, it's really like useless land that we're just taking off our inventory. The county can use it for the Turkey Creek Golf Course. So that's what we're doing. We're not giving away Broadway frontage, land, you know. Well, this is just, it's still, it's still your tax dollars, if it comes from the county or comes from the Maryville, so why would make them pay for it? It's just an intergovernmental swap of land to work together.
Why you make me pay taxes?
Sir, if anybody gets entered on that land that the town owns, that's a liability. We transferred a liability from our ownership to the county's ownership.
And we should have done a better job of explaining that, it's not buildable. Brian.
Brian Mesarch, 201 East 68th Place. As we're thinking about and discussing the court system, what was discussed in the past is that the court is being closed due to financial costs, but is that something that we really need to be thinking about, is how much the court costs? Courts are there to protect freedom, fairness, justice, the American way. We just had someone from the school system that said, the truancy court is a huge benefit to the school system, but we're just going to throw this away, when we have pastors and other respectable members of the community here saying, asking, why are we spending money on this, or that, or the other? We have 61st Avenue that doesn't look great, but 93rd Avenue, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to put flowers to make it look nice for Crown Point. It doesn't, we need to start thinking about the priorities here, and you know what, maybe we should protect the court system in that American way, and fairness and justice for people, versus whether or not we're making enough money. Whether the court makes money or not, it's, it's not a business, it shouldn't be there. And the same way for, for people speeding through neighborhoods, we're not writing tickets to make money, and oh, we don't write tickets on Broadway because the state gets the money, not Maryville. We should be writing tickets to stop people from speeding, so that children don't get hurt, so that people and senior citizens walking to the park don't get hurt. That's why we should be spending the money. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ursula Peppers, I live on 56th Avenue, and I have a concern with the street that I live on, coming down 56th Avenue, is so raggedy, it hasn't been paved, the people use it as a drag strip. I have grandchildren, I have a new puppy, I'm sick, I can't check my mail, cars are going so fast. However, we just had trucks and trucks and trucks on our street cutting down, they told me they were going to cut down 500 trees. I don't know if you guys talked about it before, but those trees were not debris, they loaded them up as nicely as they could, they strapped them down. I work, I work in the trucking industry, so those trees were going for something useful. I was wondering if we use that money, since we giving away land, I was wondering, did we use the money for those trees as a resource for Maryville, because we could use that revenue as well? Can anybody answer that? What was the trees, what, what did we do with the tree money? Those lumber? That's a lot of trees cut down. My family cleared lots in Kentucky and Alabama, that's a lot of money. It caused our family to split. They fought over, it was so much money. 500 is a lot of money. Nobody knows. Okay. I just wanted to ask.
It's all part of the price that the contractors charge us, we get credit for the wood that they're going to haul away for us, it's all included in the overall price.
I think there's a lot of money, okay, if you say...
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Ron Danil, I am on West 65th Avenue in Maryville. So I have two issues with my street. One, I know people have complained about before, but it looks like we're not going to get anything done until we keep complaining, or as the other lady pointed out, an accident happened and somebody gets hurt. Coming around the curve on 65th Avenue, it is tons of cars, trucks that are parked. I've been on that block for, going on 12 years. About two years ago, the new neighbor moved in, and he moved in six cars and a couple of trucks with him. And he even has a snowplow that doesn't move in the wintertime. And he even has a, a snowplow that doesn't move in the wintertime. And then on the other side of him, it is other neighbors that are parked there. So if, when the people are speeding around the corner, and I'm coming, it's who sees who first on who's going to stop. People have complained about that. I've talked to code enforcement. That's a joke. Um, I talked to code enforcement about it. They said there was nothing they can do about it, and it always goes to, talk to this person, talk to that person, talk to that person. It's going to be an accident. Hopefully, nothing happens like what happened in that other lady's yard. If anybody comes down my yard and code enforcement said to me, when I stopped her in the street like this, I flagged her down. She said, I wish everybody's yard looked as nice as yours did. And all I'm thinking is when that lady said, if a car drives through my yard, it's going to be really, it's going to be really bad. So you also take into consideration, when people are constantly coming in and saying, these things need to be looked into and taken care of, it's serious. The other matter is, when you're turning, if you are going north, and you're turning on Sixty-Fifth Avenue, the cars are speeding up and down the street. Taft, Taft Street. It's dark. There's no lights. They're speeding. I have been hit with my son in the car. I am, signal is on. I just so happened to look in my rearview mirror, and I'm like, oh my God, is he going to stop? Is he going to stop? Ongoing traffic is coming this way. I could not turn. He hit us, knocked us clear cross into the other street, and he had no insurance. If they could put, I know they probably can't put a stop sign there, some type of flashing, warning, yield, just to let them know that that little street is sitting there. Because the only thing is, there is one little bitty light, once you get to the street. So if there's anything that they can put there, just to let people know that this is a turn, like people are turning here. So of course, every time I'm turning, I'm paranoid, because I'm watching people, like, oh my God, they're going to slow down. And then sometimes they just speed up on you, and then they get over. But you don't know if they're going to stop. There's been numerous occasions where I went all the way down, turned around, and came back, so I'm on the right side of the street, so I don't have to be fearful of being hit. So if there's any way that they can do something small, I'll take a speed bump at this point. I'll take anything. I don't care. It's something small that they'll know, so nobody else get hit on that corner. And then turning into the subdivision, hitting that curve, these teenagers are driving, they don't slow down, their music is high, they're not looking, they're on their cellphones, and if we don't stop to go, is it somebody coming around that curve? Somebody's going to get hit. And when they get hit, they're going to hit other cars, because there's other cars there. They have nowhere to go. They're going to hit other, other cars. So you're going to end up with a, a bad collision.
We'll take a look at it, ma'am. Thank you for letting us know. Any other public comment tonight?
Good evening. Good evening, fellow residents. My name is Gene Belasco. I live at seventy-seven ninety-six Delaware Place, across the street from here. I am currently the town judge. I, I, it seems to me that, you know, I feel like I'm the only voice in the wilderness here, um, with respect to what the council is attempting to do to the court. Now, as a result, as you know, we are engaged in litigation. I heard today that, by the way, Mike Brown, the duly-elected new council, I'm sorry, clerk of the, of the county, is here in the audience, um, that we, for some reason, are neglecting to realize that the impact of what you're doing will impact mostly minority people. Why? Because we make up more than fifty percent. Don't forget that we're thirty-six thousand people in this town, and that, you know, just on that, virtually alone, uh, we, you know, should have and should maintain the court. But I would, I don't think they realize that it's no longer about money. I mean, we've had these discussions about making money, losing money, all that, nothing about that, because as your attorney knows, the statute is pretty clear, there's no requirement regarding making money, not making any money. You have the authority this year, and you had the authority back in two thousand and eighteen, to pass an ordinance closing the court. In the first instance, you missed that deadline, and you went to nineteen, and that's why we're in litigation. Had you done it properly, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having any of this. Now, this is a year where you could do it, and you don't have to have a reason. I mean, you have the authority. The question is, should you do it? You know, I, as a resident, for one, would not want to have, whatever matters I have with the town, to be resolved somewhere out there fifteen miles away from here. Now, face it, you don't have the authority to tell where the cases can be filed, where they're going to be heard. The person who does, however, is the chief judge of the county, who's indicated that in all likelihood, all our cases, all of our, all of our stuff is going to go to, to, is going to go to Hammond. And the reason is because she's the newest judge, and she has to, you know, it's something to do with, with case counts and all that. Regardless of all that, I just, if I get a, a, a traffic citation, not that any of you have probably ever gotten one, I would want it resolved by one of my fellow people or somebody that we elected in town, rather than have some total stranger, wouldn't care less, you know, make a decision on my, on, on, on my personal stuff. Same thing with the, with the court. Uh, the court, the, the council passed an ordinance regarding the creation of truancy court, okay? Thousands of children and their families, because it's not just the one kid. They have children, they have other siblings in the home. There's either single parents or multi-parent situation that need help. Because of that ordinance, we've made arrangements and have contracted, and, and, I'm sorry, and all my predecessors have done this before me as well, uh, arrange for Regional to provide services at no cost to them, in order to facilitate the issues that they may be having. That has to do with tutoring, has to do with, with, um, mental health, has to do with any kind of issues that affects their children's attendance. It could be as simple as not having a, a stable place to live, okay? Regional and their staff provide that at no cost, they provide that to these people, all right? Again, minority, the, the, the majority of those people are minorities. I can't get you to understand that, that you are impacting that. And even though, you know, it looks like we are mixed, it really aren't, you know? I, when I signed on to this, you know, uh, poster, you know, I took it seriously. You know, I wanted to be sure that we were all inclusive. But what you're doing, and what you've done, you know, so far, doesn't seem to me, you know, I, I'm to the point that, you know what? Erase my name from there, okay? Because you're either inclusive, or you're not, and you're not acting like you are. That's all my comments for today.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Attorney Amanda Hires. Uh, we do have a building at Six West Seventy-third, right here in Maryville. Um, however, I speak just briefly this evening as one of the attorneys for the Lake County Clerk newly-appointed, Michael A. Brown. Uh, just this evening, uh, on behalf of the Lake County Clerk, we filed a motion to intervene in the current litigation between, uh, the city and the town, and the court. Um, that motion was filed after a hearing, in which we learned that the timeline for the closure of the court was on a much more expedited basis than we were originally led to believe. Now, let me be clear, the Lake County Clerk makes absolutely no representation as to whether the court should be closed, or whether the wisdom in closing the court was duly noted by all council members. However, as the bulk of these cases in the court would then fall upon the jurisdiction of the Lake Superior and Circuit Clerk, we now have a vested interest in the outcome of the litigation and further procedures that this council is attempting to make. Further, we have been involved, as the Lake County Clerk, in closures of two other city and town courts, specifically Hammond City Court, as well as Whiting City Court. The process for closing a court is a very orderly transition that also, a major stakeholder has been overlooked here. That is, the Indiana Court, Supreme Court, Office of Court Technology. They are the individuals responsible for making sure that the clerk in Crown Point has all the necessary tools to be able to assist the citizens once their cases are transferred. Further, there's a caseload allocation plan that needs to be followed. So I just wanted to make the council aware that we are happy to answer any questions. We are happy to sit down in further meetings between the city, excuse me, the town and the court. But if transfer were to occur, enclosure were to occur on the original expedited basis of the ordinance that I've reviewed, which was September thirtieth, that would put the Lake County residents and the Maryville residents at great risk if the orderly transition that we have previously laid out on April twenty-second of this year was not followed. So again, we are happy to any, answer any questions you may have. The clerk, on behalf of the clerk's office, would like to make sure that the interests of the citizens of Lake County, as well as the residents of Maryville, are safeguarded for what seems to be the ultimate closure, which again, we make no judgment on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Suggs. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of the Maryville Community School Corporation. And I'm also a resident of Maryville. Closing the truancy court, uh, would be detrimental to our school corporation. This is the one single platform that we have currently available to us to basically, uh, enforce or regulate parents to become actively involved in our school's corporation. Uh, as educators, we all agree, and I'm quite sure everyone sitting here agrees, uh, that education is the key, uh, not only to our community, but also to those young folks that are coming up within our community. We speak of things such as economic development. We speak of things such as, uh, educational growth within our society. Uh, we want a city, a, a community that is safe and orderly. I always say that if we do not educate a child in school, they're going to be educated on the streets. And if a child is educated on the streets, then we have another serious problem. If we take away the truancy court, we have no mechanism whatsoever to enforce our parents to ensure that our students are coming to school. We have to think, we're talking about elementary students and middle school students, in some situations, high school students. Elementary child cannot drive themselves to school. So therefore, the onus becomes on the parent to actually, uh, expedite that particular process, and ensuring that that particular child attends school. A parent can come to a school meeting, but there is a limit, there's a limitation on what we can actually do to enforce, uh, any, uh, regulations whatsoever that a parent brings, uh, uh, or, or brings their child to school. But through the truancy system, we have been able to, uh, see massive changes. As Mrs. Lily, Lily has spoken earlier, uh, it's a tool that we can use to, uh, sort of, convince parents to do the right thing in many situations. Uh, without that particular platform, without that particular tool, uh, our hands are tied. And we talk about, again, education, and we also have to keep in mind that we speak of a village, and we speak of a community. Well, it takes a village to raise a family, and it takes a village to educate a child also. And in Maryville Community School Corporation, one in which we are very proud of, because we're all here sitting together now, trying to find a common solution, the, the best solution for, uh, this particular situation that we're currently facing, uh, closing the, the truancy court would be a major mistake, I, I, I truly must say. Uh, it would be detrimental not only to our school corporation, but also, in the long run, be detrimental to our community also. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to announcements tonight, we have the Town Council workshop on September sixth at four-thirty, and a Town Council meeting on September thirteenth at six-thirty.
Mr. President, I got one more announcement.
Mr. Mitchell.
Uh, get your calendars ready. Uh, September twenty-fourth at noon, uh, Maryville FOPU will be putting on a charity event. Uh, it's going to be a duck race in Turkey Creek. It's going to go from the American Legion all the way down to where the old mill used to be, right there. Uh, they're selling ducks for twenty dollars apiece. Proceeds are going to victims of domestic violence at the Haven House and the St. Jude House. Um, so they're going to have the event there from noon till, they're going to have entertainment and whatever else going on as well. So I will go ahead and challenge the rest of the council, as far as anybody else. Let's go ahead and show our support for domestic violence and the victims of domestic violence.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I understand our motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Mr. White, second by Mrs. Gusek, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.